And it's six o'clock, why don't we get started? First thing on the agenda, are there any adjustments to the agenda at all?
I have nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything either. All right, and anything, anything that anybody else might have, Diana or Brandy? Guess not, okay.
Nothing from me, everything looks good.
Okay. So is there any public comment at all? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. So Paul and Brian, did you get a chance to look at the bills at the town office?
I have not, I was straight out all day, I'll try to go there tomorrow.
I did get down there and signed off on them.
Okay, so there's two of us, so we can approve them. I think in the, well hopefully in the future we'll be meeting in a physical space again, but um, you know, I've just been realizing that when we approve the bills, we probably should at least have a quorum of the select board that's had a chance to look at them.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 8th, 2020 select board meeting and the June 10th special select board meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And those are, those are down in the town office too to be signed up.
I'll sign those when I go down.
Okay. And then at 6:05 or shortly thereafter, we're going to be joined by Allison Thomas. She's the education director for the Fish and Wildlife Management Agency. She wants to talk to us about the Buck Lake camp and the possibility of maybe putting up a gate. She's going to be joining us by phone. And of course she's scheduled at 6:05 and we're a little ahead of schedule. So.
Michael, this is Ally Thomas, are you able to hear me?
I am, okay, that's you there, okay, good. Yeah, so go ahead Ally, you're on the, next on the agenda.
Okay, thanks, I won't take up much time, but one thing that we were wondering is, Buck Lake Conservation Camp, right up Buck Lake Road in Woodbury, is, as you all know, part of a Class 4 road, but it's within a wildlife management area that our department manages, which also has the campus for the camp program there. That road will always remain open because there's a fishing access and boat access area available kind of toward the end of the road. The problem we're seeing especially more this year because we have no staff on site to kind of monitor the waterfront area, is despite signs and cones and other indicators that people are not supposed to go beyond the public access part of that road and not to the waterfront, we're having a lot of people drive down there, which isn't the worst thing if they were to just drive and put in a boat, we wouldn't really care. The problem is a lot of people are starting fires in the fire pits or next to the fire pits or on the shoreline, which is a danger, dangerous situation. And sometimes they're, they're leaving a lot of trash behind. We have a rowboat down there that I've tried to cable, but when I cable it, it gets cut. And so it's better if we just don't cable it and let people use it, but they often don't put it back. So long story short, there's just a lot of people who aren't really policing themselves well down there. So normally we have staff on site to say, you know, this isn't an area open to the public, please go to the access area, but this summer we don't. By this point, it's too late to put up a gate that would help for the summer just because by the time we could get all the contracts in place and acquire a gate, the summer would be done. But it did make me realize a gate would probably help in the long run anyway with a lot of those issues. And so specifically what we're, what we would like to just pot, like the idea of maybe doing is putting up a gate beyond that public access part of the road, which is at the very end kind of right before the waterfront loop happens. Just to divert people from going down there and parking and kind of leaving trash and just camping out all day there, because it's not that intention of that spot. So I know it's a big, a big question because it's a Class 4 road and I don't even know what the efficacy of a gate would do. I know sometimes there are issues with gates getting rammed and other types of vandalism, but I thought I would plant the seed and ask about one. So perhaps in the future, when our state budget loosens up a little bit and we have more flexibility to purchase items, that might be something we could entertain. And so I thought, well now is a good time to talk about it. And so we would be ready if it was approved. So that's kind of my spiel if anyone has any questions.
I've got one, where exactly did you want to put the gate, I wasn't clear on it.
Yeah, so are you familiar with Buck Lake Road?
Yes.
Okay, so you know, there's the public access turn, that's to the right as you're going down the road toward the lake.
Yep.
Beyond that is camp property and theoretically off limits to the public just staying there and using the waterfront area.
Right.
Technically that road goes through so they could use that kind of, but we would like it just somewhere beyond that public access point. That, and we currently have a sign up that just says, please, you know, no public beyond this point. But just somewhere beyond that public access so we could stop at least the cars from going up. And then it would possibly help with the ATV traffic in the off season as well, which I know is a little bit of an issue.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, I'm not sure about Mike and Paul, but.
I don't have a problem. Our only issue is access to the dry hydrant. We would have to have one of our Knox locks put on there so we could get through it with our Knox box key.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't even think of that.
Because what we typically would do, you would put your padlock on it and you'd loop it through our padlock. So if either party unlocked their padlock, you can still open the gate. That way we don't have to keep a gate key. But you'd have to just contact me and you can go online and buy a Knox key and it'll use the same key which we can get into your building with, with that Knox box that you have.
Okay, so that's great to know. And again, right now we have an absolute spending freeze on all state funds and part of camp is state funded, so I can't purchase it. But I really wanted to start the conversation, not knowing how long, you know, if you wanted to talk about it with me offline for a while or whatever. I just wanted to start it so if, if in the future we do want one, we had permission.
Yeah, I saw your, we went down there to, to test the dry hydrant this year and there must have been 15 people down there, we had a hard time getting into the hydrant.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue.
I stopped to check your building, the Knox box, and your door was wide open. And the guy that called the state police that night.
Yeah, the problem with that is someone keeps picking our lock. Like we're locking them, someone can pick those locks. And, and we had a locksmith out there just the other day, like last Friday. And, and he said, you have really good locks, someone who knows how to pick locks really well. So that's a bummer for all of Woodbury, as it were. But uh, you know, there's some things I can't defend against, I guess, except we do have cameras out now, so.
I did call the state police that night, he closed the door for you, so it was locked up, but I think they must have called you.
Oh, I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate that very much, thanks Paul. It's an issue and we're trying to figure it out with cameras. And changing the locks is a huge deal because they're all synchronized. So we're trying to avoid that, but, and if someone can pick it, what's the difference? So we're just trying to figure out a few ways to avoid some vandalism anyway, knowing that there's always going to be a little bit of stuff that happens there. But, so that's all the time I wanted to take of you. Again, you can talk about it more when I'm offline and get back to me, but I just wanted to present the idea to this group tonight, so thanks for your time.
Can I make a comment before you go?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I just think it's, I know people abuse the, the lakefront area. It's a real shame because it's a beautiful place and it would be wonderful for, for Woodbury residents to have a place to bring their kayaks. I don't think the fishing access is very much use at all. But I wanted to also say that I think it's kind of, I know everybody's short of money, but with all the investment the state has out there, to leave that with no, no kind of monitoring, no staff there all summer, I think is kind of irresponsible. Think pass that on to the governor.
Yeah, okay, I don't talk to him very much, but what I will say is we do have a staff member out there every day all summer this year. So it isn't completely unstaffed.
And the fish game wardens could be asked to check that more often also.
Yeah, yeah, and Russ does a good job of monitoring that as best he can too, but I do appreciate the feedback. And yeah, we're trying, well keeping within our budget and keeping our staff safe to keep that area monitored and staffed pretty much at all times now.
It really is a very isolated area and, you know, vandalism, it's kind of a ripe piece of fruit for vandalism. It would be good to try to. And I just wanted to say that I approved the putting of a gate also. So I think, you know, with the lockbox that Paul mentioned in his, with his fire chief had, I think, you know, I think the select board is in support of having that happen, so whenever, whenever it's possible.
Great, thanks, I really appreciate your time and your openness to this. And I'll just stay in touch with you and Paul, Mike, regarding, regarding the gate when, again, when we have a little more flexibility with things. But thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Great, yeah, thank you Allison.
Thank you.
Take care, bye.
Okay, so next on the agenda is, you know, we've been getting a lot of calls of different sites with junk and shooters and people complaining about sites with, that are getting pretty well trashed. So I just, I have invited a few people to join us for a discussion about that. We talked about it a little bit at our last select board meeting. I did get a template ordinance, a junk, junk car ordinance from Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I'm hoping that some people have received that. And anyone who would like to see that for further discussion, because we won't solve everything tonight, but I would like to start a discussion about this. There seems to be a real wave of complaints this summer. So this is kind of a beginning, a beginning round of discussion about this. So I know that there's, there's an issue on County Road up by Greenwood Lake. The Compliance and Enforcement Division of the Department of Environmental Conservation is working on that, I tried to get an update from them. And speaking with the agent who's dealing with that, he actually has a meeting with the property owner tomorrow. So I hope to know a little bit more about what's going on there. And I know there's also an issue with that same property owner about firearms and other stuff like that. And the person from the DEC clearly stated to me that that's not an issue that they will deal with that, and no one's from town should really try to deal with it either. That's something for the state police to deal with, so. And neighbors too, you know, that, I know that you have had some run ins with this person. And I don't want anybody getting hurt, so you know, if that's the shooting and any, any other kind of behavior that makes people feel really uneasy or unsafe, that's an issue for the state police.
Is there any ordinance against the shooting over there, Michael?
Beg your pardon?
Is there any kind of ordinance or anything that's enforceable as far as the shooting goes?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I mean, people can shoot on their own property, you know, there's a lot of people in town that target shoot or. I think there's a question in this situation on how safely that this person is doing it and, and also the fact that it happens, seems to happen in the middle of the night or late at night.
Maybe it's a morning shooting after like 10:00 PM maybe or something?
Well, we could look and see if there is such a, I mean, it could, that could qualify under perhaps a noise ordinance and, and I, you know, we could inquire of the LCT. Paul, did you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, the tough part is, you've kind of hit on it already, is the enforcement of these things.
Right.
State police, it's not going to be a top priority because obviously they're really busy. Yeah, so I'm not opposed to ordinances on the face of it, I just don't know where we go once the violation happens. That's the struggle I have, because we all, I'm sure we don't want, you know, as fire warden, I've had things come to blows with guns and everything else with just burning. You know, where and I told the firefighters, I said, don't get into that, I don't want to see the state police have to shoot anybody, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, the, we had an incident on the lake here on Memorial Day Monday with a very, very large boat raising destructive wakes. The state police were called and the reason the state police showed up is that the people that called the state police said that we had an incident, an unsafe operation. Consequently, in talking with the state police, they said they cannot come out to address and answer a call that a citizen has made unless there's some violation that they can come out and check. So for example, when people, if people called up and said, there's a big boat on the lake, it shouldn't be here, they couldn't address that. But when you call and say dangerous and unsafe operation, they can come out. That in mind with the shooting. If you call the state police and say, we suspect he's using a magazine or a clip that's in excess of 10 or 15 rounds, they will check on that. Or, I swear, I swear this guy's been setting all bombs in his backyard because it, you know, concussion, I can feel the concussion on my deck, I don't know, how far am I away, Sean, a good mile away?
Yeah.
And if you call up, say, somebody setting off explosives, again, they're going to check that stuff. But if you call and say somebody's shooting, they can't. So it's how you frame the call. And we got to educate the people who are going to make those calls to frame the call properly. And Sean, myself and a couple other people in the community have already discussed that in terms of calling the state police on the shooting. I mean, state police keep showing up there saying, hey, what's going on? He hopefully gets the message.
Right, right.
Well, another thing about his shooting, his property is surrounded by either marsh or private property. He has almost no safe way to shoot on his property without the potential for shooting on some other person's property.
Under the lake and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, lake or, I mean, he's surrounded by private property on all, on three sides and lake and marsh on the fourth side, so, and very, very closely, I mean, we're talking.
That, that marsh technically is private property also.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, because he doesn't own a lot of land there, I take it.
So where the building is, is he, you know, is he shooting out behind that? Because that would be all hillside, that seems like that would be a safe place to.
From what we know, he is, if you were to walk out his front door, cross County Road, and then enter the marsh side of his property and face more or less south, he's short, shooting toward Ann Weller's property. There's a driveway that is right behind where he shoots. So shooting right at her driveway, probably a relatively safe spot because there's a lot of traffic, but you know, we do see people on there, summer and winter.
There's no hill or rise in the, in the landscape to stop a bullet at that spot.
Not, not in that spot, if he did, like one of you said, and shot in the back hill, you know, against Woodbury Mountain, that would be a different shooting situation.
Okay, well it sounds like the neighbors are, you know, are pretty clear on what they have to do as far as the shooting issue is concerned. So I guess I'd like to kind of steer our conversation back to, you know, just junk, I guess. Different, there are a number of properties that seem to be causing their neighbors unease. And you know, we've been receiving different calls up from West Woodbury, other spots here in Woodbury. I know the, the agent at DEC is working on at least three sites. So in town. Yeah, and I know Bob Martin sent me an email about some other sites that he's aware of. So it does seem to be an issue. And you know, again, like Paul said, you know, we, we could create an ordinance, but you know, we have found that, you know, we have a animal control officer and a, and a animal ordinance and trying to do any kind of enforcement for that seems to be pretty frustrating and kind of gets nowhere really, it seems, so I don't know how, you know.
Well, the problem comes is that, what I've experienced is sometimes the other party's willing to keep escalating the level of violence even. And so you either got to stick and stay, which means arming yourself, doing all those type of things, but I don't think it's what we want to do. Or you've got to get the police to come, which, again, they're very limited in their ability to respond to these type of things. So that's the tough part. You know, obviously these things work well with people who are willing to say, hey, I made a mistake or well, you got me and I'm going to stop it. But it don't work well with someone who wants to defy that and make you, make you push the issue. And that's where we're running into the problem. Because again, at my state level job, I've worked into things where we've got judges' orders to get defied because, again, we see the issues with the police having to have struggles with someone to force a court order. They kind of step back and say, well, it's not worth that, you know? Am I, is it worth getting guns out, potentially shooting someone over this particular thing? And that's kind of the thing going on today, it's kind of a apropos topic that we're on because that's what these things end up with eventually, or could.
And can, if I could add one thing about this, I'm a firm believer that for the most part, we should allow our neighbors to do what they want. You know, I really want to be left alone, I live out in the country for that reason. But when I impact someone else or when my neighbors impact others, I think that's where the issue is. And, and there's probably six or seven junked vehicles over his property, and that's one thing. But there's also been concern about him filling in wetlands. And about him cutting down trees on the wetlands and even, and I cannot tell you if this is true or not, but I've heard multiple reports of him cleaning out house furnaces on the property which would directly go into our, our lake.
Did you mean oil tank?
Yeah, I see there's oil tanks there.
And so that, this is not just an automobile, you know, on the yard. This is something in my mind, it's a bigger threat to, you know, to why we're out here.
And the agent from, the agent from DEC is very much aware of that and, and you know, he, he is actively working with the property owner to, and I don't know what, you know, what the end result will be, but they do have enforcement. You know, they're able to enforce the, what they require of the property owner. So, and you know, the minute I mentioned this to him, he knew of the site, he knew, you know, of some of the problems and was immediately on, working on the site. So that, that situation there is definitely being investigated right now and.
Can we get an update from those guys, Michael?
I tried to, I did get, tried to get an update and the, the agent said that he actually has a meeting with the property owner tomorrow.
That's good.
So what I'll do is email him on probably Wednesday or call him and ask him, you know, what's, to give me an update.
Point of clarification, he's not meeting with the property owner, he's meeting with the grandson of the property owner who lives there.
The person who lives there, yeah.
Is that right, Sean?
That is right.
I believe that's right, yeah.
That's true, that's who he's meeting with, I'm just trying not to say any names in our select board meeting. But yes, that is true. It is the grandson of the property owner. And you know, when we had troubles there a couple of years ago, we tried to contact the property owner, who we were told that that person was no longer alive and that this person's father would be the person to contact, and he was impossible to get a hold of. So we kind of went down a dead end road there. So, you know, and obviously this is a person that we have to, that we have to deal with, I don't. So, but, and that, it does seem to be that they're, this fellow from, the agent from DEC, he will definitely get results, one way or the other, so. Paul?
Yeah.
Did you, I just saw your, your audio light come on, so I was wondering if you.
No, no, my computer's still doing its update, it's bonging and.
So, and I know I've heard of, you know, another property owner up in West Woodbury, there have been some complaints.
Yeah, there's some challenges up there too.
Yeah, and I noticed that there, there is one person from West Woodbury here with us. I don't know if they want to make any comments or if they just want to hear the conversation that we've had. I haven't contacted the agent from Enforcement and Compliance at DEC about the situation up in West Woodbury. I know that somebody did do a site visit there, I think it was last year, when there was concerns about something happening in a stream that flows through the property and the person did go up there and look at it and, and you know, from his point of view, there was no compromising of the stream, so you know, he didn't have an issue with.
Hi Michael, we're just here to kind of listen in on things and see progress and what kind of enforcement action you folks might be looking at with that property. I have not been down there, breaks my heart to go down there.
Yeah, I've been meaning to get up there to take a look at it. You know, it's a half hour drive for me to get there and I've been kind of busy lately, but I have been, you know, kind of wanting to just mention this site to the same agent that's working at other sites in Woodbury. He hasn't mentioned that he has been there. But I guess I.
That's probably the next thing for us, getting him up there.
What's that, Brian?
That's probably the next level for us to go, is to make sure we get this guy to go up there to West Woodbury and look at it.
Yeah, I guess I just, you know, he's pretty busy too, I don't want him to go on a wild goose chase. I mean, it may, so I thought it might be, I should, I should just try to get up there and take a, wouldn't take me too long to assess what's going on there, whether or not it would be. Actually, you know, and he might actually be able to, to kind of use his computer and use the satellites. That's what he did for the County Road Greenwood Lake property. He kind of looked at it through the satellite images. So maybe he could do the same up in West Woodbury.
Yeah, worth a shot.
Yeah, I'll ask him to do that, see what he says.
Do you have the address for it up there?
I do, yeah, yeah. So, you know, and we can, we can explore an ordinance again, you know, it's the, it's that old, you know, the end question about enforcing whatever we write down.
Yeah, because on the face of it, I don't oppose ordinances, it's just, I really would want to put it out. Obviously we'll have public meetings and whatnot. See what the public's appetite is for it, for the rest of the process. I do understand the issues everybody's having.
Right, I know, and just reading through the model ordinance, you know, there would be a number of properties in town that would be actually eligible for some kind of scrutiny.
Right.
That could create a whole issue in town too.
Yeah, yeah.
Diana, did you have a comment?
I did, I just wanted to read everybody this ordinance that we do have on the books. On in zoning, it says, section 3.8, storage of motor vehicles and miscellaneous junk. In all districts of the town, any motor vehicle which is not state inspected and all miscellaneous junk must be stored in an enclosed building or placed in a rear yard and screened from view from any public way. But you know, that's zoning and we don't have, again, much enforcement. See, sometimes it just helps to tell people, but in these cases, I don't think it's going to help.
Well, some of the.
The state law, as far as vehicles go, isn't it like, I think it's like three unregistered vehicles?
It's three, three unregistered vehicles, yes.
Yeah.
And you know, with, with that being state law, again, you know, if the town doesn't really feel it has much of a, of an arm for enforcement, this is where the Enforcement and Compliance at DEC, you know, because that's a state statute, they would be willing to get involved with any, any situation like that.
I think that's a, isn't that a DMV rule, not an ANR?
Uh, well, no, it's, it's part of, you know, the fellow that I've been talking to and working with, you know, he mentioned that also, that that's, it's a state. to and working with, you know, he mentioned that also, that that's, it's a state statute, so it doesn't really matter, you know, what agency, yeah, with, yeah. It's not just particular to the Department of Motor Vehicles. So, you know, just from the folks that are here tonight, who, you know, have issues with this, and are kind of involved in a situation that's, that they'd probably rather not be involved in, what are your thoughts on the, on the select board, the town pursuing some type of, I'll call it a junk ordinance, for lack of a better word? Any, any comments?
Skip? I, I think it's worth pursuing at this point.
Okay.
To see what we can come up with. And again, there's some people that might not realize that they're doing something they shouldn't be, and that ordinance would be sufficient to have them correct the situation. Whereas the hardliners, that, it's not gonna help. But, you know, again, taking the perspective that half a loaf is better than none, I'd like to pursue it. That doesn't mean pass it. Let's see what we can come up with.
Okay.
Ordinance wise.
Well, we have this, this model. Go ahead, Sean.
And I think I completely agree with what Paul is saying about the ineffectiveness without escalation. But I think it's nice to have an ordinance that you can, maybe this goes back to what Skip is talking about, you know, just put a little bit of pressure, and maybe the people who don't know, or the moderates, and just, it helps to have a variety of steps you can work toward, to see if them will work.
Okay.
We're all for an ordinance, but you got to put some teeth in it. And if something like this doesn't pass, then maybe you beef up the ordinance you already have with zoning, with enforcement and fines.
Yeah.
Are these, are these people paying their taxes?
Oh, yeah.
No.
So even if, even if our zoning administrator could send out notices, so that it is coming from the town, that it is stating, this is an issue, something needs to be done about it, and, and making the next step, whether it be a fine, or putting a penalty, so that some action gets taken place, whether it's building a structure without a zoning permit, or vehicles, or junk.
That's true. Any enforcement action should start with a notice of alleged violation, some kind of a letter that put people on notice that they're being looked at.
And, and this model ordinance that the LCT set, there are, there are steps, you know, fines, warning letters, et cetera. There's, there's a whole process for dealing with a situation in the template. I know I sent, I sent the VLC template out to.
I have it. I have read the whole thing. I've read some of it.
I have to read it, too, Michael.
Yeah, yeah. I, I have, I've read it through once. But, so, you know, Sean and Joyce, if you would like, I think, in fact, I think this afternoon, I sent Joyce, I sent it to Mark anyway, which I wish I'd imagined that you would have it, too. But I'll send it to everybody who's been here tonight, kind of concerned about this, and.
Are the folks who are, are here willing to work on kind of like a little group, to come up with something they could propose to us? Just because I know we've got a lot on our plates, and that might help get it moved along a little bit.
Yes.
That's just a thought I had, because I know Michael's got a lot, and I've got a lot, Brian does. So just, sometimes things tend to lag, just because of the time constraints we all have.
Michael, point, point of clarification.
Sure.
Michael and I talked a couple of weeks ago about fines. Fines have no teeth in them, okay? You assess a fine, and if the people refuse to pay, and they refuse to pay, it just gets set up as a lien on the property, and that never gets collected until the property is, is sold. So the town, in effect, yes, we have an ordinance that has fines, whatever in it, but there's no way to enforce the collection of the fines that have been levied. And I think the maximum limit on the fine was, what, $1,000, Michael? I forget.
Yeah, I can't remember. But, you know, there is sort of a process if a fine isn't paid, and I don't know how it really works. But it can, the whole formality of the, the warnings and the fines at all can be, you know, if they aren't paid, they can be sent to the Washington County Superior Court. And they're supposed to pick up the ball and try to, to have the fines and the enforcement implemented. But I don't know, you know, I've never gone through that process. I don't know how successful they are either. But, but yeah, it's, that's the thing. It's, the teeth, you know, the teeth are pretty well worn, filed down. It's kind of like biting somebody with gums, your gums, you know? It's frustrating, yeah.
Yeah, because this is all, because we're just, it's, we have drug overdoses. I can't get the police to come. So it's just, the whole thing's very frustrating for everybody.
Right.
Diana?
What?
So as you, when you were zoning administrator, how was your enforcement? Was there a standard letter that you issued? How did you handle that?
I think we used to have a letter. I don't know if I could find it now, but I certainly wrote enough notices of alleged violation when I worked for the state also. So I could possibly, something, to put together a draft that Skip could, I mean, that Bob could maybe use.
Diana, you've got everything on that computer dating back to 1990 something. I know, I've seen it.
Find it.
Type in a little search and see if it pops out of the, the box. So, so I'll send out this model ordinance. You know, I, I am, you know, with what time I have, you know, I'm, I'm willing to kind of work with Skip and Sean and Joyce, or Mark, or whoever, to kind of coordinate, just working on this, this ordinance. And, you know, we'll get it, maybe get a draft that we can, again, discuss at a select board meeting, and, and then probably having some type of public hearing. It might be good, you know, just having a public hearing might be, give other people a chance, once we can meet actually in a physical place, to, I'm sure there are other people that have feelings about this. It might be just a forum for people to, to share, vent, or whatever. And, you know, we can kind of go with, with what we hear at that hearing. So.
It would be good, have a, if you have a draft, if somebody's working on a draft, it's good to send something like that out to the public, in order to get people interested to come to a hearing.
Right, we could, we could post it on our website, or on Front Porch Forum, which, you know, and, and that would, that would help. You're right, Diana.
But you'd want to, you'd want to be able to have written input, and then also a meeting where people could come if they wanted to speak in person.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
Can I make a comment on this?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea that you have some kind of enforcement. But I've found it over the years, very, very hard to get blood out of a stone. So I don't think the first channel should be threatening them with a fine.
I agree.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah. Most, you know, most of these situations, it is sort of getting blood out of a stone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, and you know, if they can't pay the fine, then, you know.
Yeah, but, you know what, they probably ain't gonna sell it, because the house ain't worth nothing, pay the fine.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not a guarantee, that's for sure. And I think, you know, we, we should realize that.
I think there needs to be something done, but I, hopefully, there's some thought put into it to, uh, make them feel like it, maybe they ought to clean their act up from the jail.
Yep.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll continue working on this situation, or situations.
Yeah, that's why I think the group you've got, if they want to work on, I think that would get a good start, and then the public input could kind of help shape that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Anything else about this issue at all that, that anybody would like to share?
Can I just make a quick comment about the shooting at night, and the, and an idea for an ordinance about that?
Sure.
Coyote, coyote hunting season is open 24/7, 365 days a year. And a lot of people hunt them at night. And there's a lot of coyote hunters in Woodbury. So they might be objecting to not being able to shoot at a certain time at night.
Right.
Just saying.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I think coyote hunting would be definitely, would be different than what this guy's doing, where you have a large number of rounds being fired in rapid succession. I've counted as many as 10, and most consistently, it's 10. Bang, 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 and stop, reload, bang. And, you know, that's not coyote shooting. I don't know how you structure ordinance to differentiate between coyote shooting and, and that type of rapid fire, but something to think about. Appreciate the comment about the coyote shooting.
Maybe it's just a bad shot.
How much do bullets cost these days? He's burning a lot of money.
Anything else? Okay, well, thanks for participating. I really appreciate it. And we'll move on to the town highway report.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it.
Take care. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for working on this.
Sure. Oh, Skip, let Sean know I'll send him the, the model ordinance.
I'll tell him that after he left, we appointed him chairman of this committee.
There you go.
Guard.
Maybe we should.
Talk to you later.
Okay, thanks, Skip.
Bye-bye.
So Chuck, you have the floor here, I guess.
Um, well. One or the other, right?
Right, yeah.
Boys have been, uh, cutting roadside. And Greg and Peter are doing a real good job of getting them laid back. We're not getting the brush picked up nearly as fast as I'd like to see it. The county road was left with some brush on it over the weekend. It was a short stretch. Greg's grader honing, he had two days off last week. I guess that's about it.
Okay, alright. Anything, anything new on the, the excavator? Is that?
Uh, we haven't seen the parat.
Okay, so wait, you're waiting for the parts? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm hoping that, I would really like to see Greg back over there two, three days, so we can move him off Chatty Hill before they came.
Yeah, yeah.
Once they, once we move it to the shop and, and do the work on the undercarriage, we're not going back to Chatty Hill.
Okay.
There's too much other stuff to do.
Yeah, yeah. How much, how much more work is there on Chatty Hill to finish it up?
Uh, we got to put culverts in by King King's driveway, resurface it, which we'll do after the excavator leaves. But we were gonna clean, uh, clean the ditches down King Pondro, but I'm gonna try to get Greg over there with a grader and a bucket loader Wednesday and Thursday. So I'm hoping to have that done with the, the grader and the bucket loader without the excavator.
Yeah, okay, yeah, great.
And hopefully, we can, I told, the guys worked, the part-time guys worked, well, I think 30 hours last week. And I told them to work them 30 hours this week to get the brush picked up out of the road.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, fine with that.
Can we, we stretch a little more out of that? Because it don't seem like it's getting picked up real fast. I hate to leave it over the weekend again.
Well, you know, I, I drove on that section of county road, and, you know, so, I, when I saw it, I said, oh, they'll probably get to that Monday. You know, it's, the tractor and more can probably go along at a, more of a clip than the folks coming behind it. So, you know, I think as long as it is, as it doesn't stay there for two weeks or a month.
Well, it's not. I mean, we're, we're working it, somebody on it every day.
I mean, I'm good with whatever you decide, Chuck. Whatever needs to be done is kind of my opinion.
Right.
Okay. I just, Fourth of July is coming right up, mate. They're leaving on the roads on, over Fourth of July weekend and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep it clean.
Yeah, and if it does take a day or a couple of days to get to it, you know, I think we all know that somebody knows it's there, and then it will get dealt with, so.
Right, okay.
Brian and Paul, do you have any questions at all, or?
Um, yeah, I was sending Chuck an email, but it's right here. I don't know who's, I got a complaint on Greenwood Lake Road that someone left two buckets of something on the hill going up in the town right away. I don't know if that's something we deal with, but they complained to me about it.
Two bucket, two five gallon pails, is them?
Yeah, if you drive up just at the, where Wayne Dunlap's old driveway gate is, right on the edge of the dirt, someone left two buckets there. And I don't, he doesn't know who put it there, and I don't know who put it there.
I mean, we could.
I don't know if we're supposed to pick that up.
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
I don't know who's supposed to either, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
We'll get it done.
I don't even know what it is.
Right.
Well, me either, but we'll check it out. Maybe choose oil, Brian, can you?
Saves me having to send you an email. I was gonna call you, but that saves a trip.
We could, we could have the road tour doing a lot of trash picking up if we.
Oh, yeah.
Leave stuff on the side of the road all over the place.
Yeah, I thought, I saw complaints, like, who left it? I don't know. It's, it's in the town right away. You're gonna leave it there? I'm like, uh, oh, no.
Well, I hadn't seen it, but I ain't been over that way for days.
That's why.
Greg didn't say anything about it. I had him hone that road the other day, and he didn't say anything about it either.
Yeah, okay.
You know how that goes.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Yep. Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Brian, do you have any, any questions for Chuck?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. So.
One more, one more statement.
Okay.
The one dump was supposed to went to Bears today, to be assessed for inspection.
Yeah.
And I had to cancel the appointment. I wanted to be able to go up, have something to say tonight about it. One of the hinges on the dump body have rotted out, and one of the hinges has come disconnected. So it's not safe to dump the body.
Okay.
Put the tires on that 4900 we bought two weeks ago, I guess.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, and put the chloride tank in it. So then I can get it out to Bears and get it assessed, and see what we're gonna have to put in it. And if it's gonna be anywhere near reasonable, I would like to, um, purchase that flatbed down in Walcott, with the idea that we're gonna put a V-Box sander on it for salt, and a decent snowplow on the front of it. Maybe not new, but a decent one.
Do you want to discuss what would be a reasonable price for fixing up the 550? And, you know, so we could kind of set a limit? And if, if it can't be fixed up for that, then we would go to the second option that you just mentioned?
Talking about keeping the truck, if we decide to keep the truck, we put the flatbed on it, right, Chuck?
Right. We're gonna have to do something, because the body's rotted out of the dump truck body, and one hinge is broke on it now. So it's not safe to use.
Yeah.
I mean, other, you can run around, pick brush up with it and stuff like that, but as far as doing anything with it, you can't.
And can, can you remind, remind us of what the price is for the truck that you just mentioned? The one in, is it in Walcott?
It's just the body, right?
No, it's a flatbed body. It's $1,200.
Okay, flatbed body, okay. Alright. And that would go on the, on the 550? Okay, now, okay, now I understand better.
I want to make sure that you guys understand, if we put a flatbed on that truck and keep it, that means we're gonna have to come up with a V-Box sander and a decent snowplow on the front of it.
Yeah.
Later, before winter, before snow flies. You know, I don't, I don't want you to think that we're just putting $1,200 into it and get it inspected, and we're all done. We're gonna have some way of putting.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. And I, we haven't spent all the insurance money that we had lost on that other truck. We can, I'm in favor, if it's a reasonable amount, to go ahead and do all that stuff, to get that truck usable.
Price on it, and I'll bring it back to you guys. You know.
Okay, good.
I'll try to have a price on a V-Box, and a, and a snowplow, and the body, and the inspection. So you'll know exactly what you're gonna have put into it to make it usable.
Yeah. I mean, my thought process under repairs is, when Bear's looking at it, if we could get an idea that it can last two or three more years, you know, that's more of an issue to me than what the actual cost is to fix it.
Right, yeah. Bear already understands that. Like I say, it was supposed to have been there today, so I'd have the report tonight, but we're just gonna make it work.
Gotcha.
So I'll get on it by next meeting. We'll have some prices.
Perfect.
Are you talking about the 4900? Are you talking about the 4900?
Or the five fifty?
Well, we've been talking about both of them. We're talking about the five fifty four right now.
Okay, okay, so that's, I'm confused.
Yeah, that's what, we had two trucks we're talking about.
All right.
And I think a lot of what Chuck's talking about is transferable to another truck anyway in the future, so.
It would be the the V-Box and the plow and everything. If we got a good three-quarter ton, we can move it on to that.
Yeah.
I'm here by phone. My computer froze up. So I don't know why, again, why it happened. I can't even shut the damn thing down, but.
Mine's doing, mine's doing reboot, 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 so. That's why I'm on my phone.
I'll kind of play with it as we go along here, but um, so.
So I guess that's all I have, but I just want to make sure you guys realize that putting a twelve hundred dollar flatbed on it is not gonna fix full problem.
Correct.
Right.
And what I had said, and I think you missed, Michael, was a bigger issue for me is that the cost is a lower priority than could it last a couple, three more years, you know? Uh, that, you know, kind of, because you put a few thousand in it and they get a few more years out of it, that's worth it. If it's only gonna last a year, then maybe, maybe not, you know?
Yeah, I wonder if Bear could kind of give us an idea of, you know, when he looks at it.
Yes, he can. Yes, he can, and he's going to.
He's going, okay, great.
This is, this is just going out to find out what it needs for inspection and if the truck will stand what we want to do for the next two, three years.
That sounds good, yeah. No sense putting money into it if it's.
If it's gonna break in half.
Yeah.
Right, right. Greg and I have looked at the frame on it and actually the frame is not that bad. It's in pretty good shape.
Okay.
I mean, they're gonna inspect, they're the ones inspecting it, so I want them to look, make sure we didn't miss a cross member or something that's rotted off.
Yeah.
Anything else, Chuck?
I think that'll probably do it.
Okay. So shall we, shall we move on to the next agenda item?
Sure.
Okay, Paul, could you just kind of give us an update on the paving?
Okay, so we awarded the bid to Green Mountain Paving and I spoke to them. I haven't heard back from my email yet, but they're gonna do it. It'll be sometime mid to late July. No firm date yet. The contract, the bid proposal said it'd be done by September first, so I'll be working on that with him. I'm working on getting a contract together for them, for us to review with them to sign. I did meet with V-Trans over our highway access permit, which apparently we had to have, and that has been issued. There was a struggle there. They kind of don't like the, how wide the entrance is and they don't like the island allowing parking. They wanted all that stuff moved and I kind of said, no, we're not doing that. I said, we're just repaving the parking lot. So we had a little session there, but they apparently have decided to issue the permit, so because we don't have a hundred grand to reconfigure the whole parking lot, so.
Right.
So that's, it permit's been issued in five days before we do the work. I'll send it through to the other board members and Chuck, I didn't get to do it yet, it just weekend, got way too busy with calls. They wanna come and inspect five before it and then once it's finished, so I'll work with Chuck on that.
What was that, Paul, you cut out there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The driveway to the school?
Well, they don't like the width of the Did you get through that part of it? Or did you lose me?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so the state didn't like the width of the access in front of the fire station. They like to limit those to forty feet. And they also didn't like the fact that the island that's there leaves room for parking, so that he kind of started off, oh, we need to close this up, put curbs in. We need to take out the island and move it. So it's only three feet or four feet off the white line and I said, ah, that's not happening. We don't have any money for that. I said, if that's a conversation you want to have, I said, we need to pave this parking lot. So they worked it out. We got the permit. Hopefully they'll stick to that when they do the, there's gonna be inspection by V-Trans five days before that we start the projects. I'll be in touch with you when that's gonna happen. And uh, and then they've got to look at it after, so I kind of told them, we're not changing anything. You guys put that entrance in to Valley Lake Road, because he didn't like that either. I said, well, you guys did it. The state did it in two thousand. Oh, so anyway, so it looks like it's gonna work out at this point.
Good. Just one other comment. We talked last, we talked last week about granite blocks and you guys okayed them. They should be here. I thought they might be here today, but it's gonna be in the next two or three days.
Okay, did you mean? Did you?
Met blocks, Chuck?
Yes, cement blocks. They should be here tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, sometime right here, right off.
Okay, great.
For the, for the school driveway and then the road down by your house, we're gonna put, fix that too. And one over on Wilbur Road.
Okay.
Cool.
But I didn't drop a ball on it. They'll be here.
Yeah, it takes time.
Yeah, you're doing well.
Yeah. Anything else at all about the roads from anybody?
Oh, and that's the paving update. So hopefully the end of July, mid to end of July, said, I'm guessing I'm gonna try to keep him off the week I'm on vacation, just so I can kind of watch it. So I gotta have a
Right.
He hasn't gotten back to me since I told him he had the bid, so I kind of got to reach back out.
Yeah.
But, but we'll see how it goes.
Okay, great. So next thing on the agenda is the town treasurer's report.
Over the past two weeks for delinquencies, we took in three thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Bringing us down to seventy-eight thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-seven cents for delinquencies. Taking in revenue. Records restory, records restoration. The Conservation Commission was given a thousand dollar grant. There was land copies, vault fees, copies at cost totaling one thousand five hundred forty dollars and twenty cents. On Saturday, the disbursements for the checks for the old store were given and accepted and hopefully that is done deal and we all can say.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everybody. Awesome.
Yes, congratulations, Brandy.
Long process. Yeah.
Yeah, and hopefully that's the final chapter. For for the property owners, anyway.
So getting ready to end the fiscal year. I will be doing a another payroll run, probably another AP run before the end of the month to get all of June's invoices paid for to finish out the fiscal year. All the stipends, select board, town hall, E nine-one-one, all those will be paid for on Monday of next week. And depending on how things come in, I may do another run on on Tuesday to close out the fiscal year, but it's here. It's.
Yeah, we're almost there.
Yep.
I I have, this is more, you know, it was, we discussed this under the personnel policy at our last meeting, but I don't know if we ever resolved it, but there was an issue for Greg Parhurst on getting, you know, getting paid for some unused vacation time. I can't, it doesn't seem like we ever really made a decision on that. We talked, you know, and it's, it sounds like if we, you know, we should probably make a decision about that tonight, so that, you know, Brandy could, if we decide to do that, Brandy could write a check for that before the fiscal year.
My question is, is that what we've historically done to this point, Michael?
We have in the past. It's not in the personnel policy to do that anymore. I know, I know that Greg has received payment for unused vacation time in the past, and I think Diana might have also. Brandy would probably know that better than me, but so we have done it. But again, it's, it's, there isn't the language for it in the personnel policy right at the moment, so.
I think it says you may, right?
Yeah, yeah.
A couple of years ago, it was required. And I asked the select board at the time if they would change it to a may, because I would rather sometimes would rather carry it over than to
Sure.
get the
Yeah.
So so my feeling on it, Michael, is if, how many hours are we talking about?
It's not a lot. Is it like twelve hours, Brandy?
It's twenty and a half.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I'd like to fix the problem, but we haven't fixed it yet, so I don't want really Greg to be you know, but that's what's been done in the past. That's kind of my feeling on it. I'd like to fix it moving forward, though.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. We need to fix that, yeah.
Especially for budgeting, if if it's gonna be carried over, that now we're gonna have to budget for two or three weeks, that if they're not taking vacation and they're getting paid out, that we need to to factor that in the budget, because we haven't been.
Right.
Hello, can I say something here?
Yes, of course.
Last select board meeting, I brought it up. Maybe it was the the special meeting we had down there. They want Monday and Tuesday off, twenty-ninth to thirtieth, and you guys okayed that, to use up that time.
Yep.
That's for personal time, though, not vacation time.
Yeah, that's for personal time.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you hadn't forgotten.
No, no.
Yeah, because I I want to fix the problem, so moving forward, we don't pay for time. We carry it forward, but we got to work on that some more.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
So I wouldn't be to stick with past practice this time, only because it's not really fair to the people that, to change in the you're already in the boat, you know?
Okay. How do you feel about that, Brian?
Yeah, I agree with Paul. We should pay.
Okay.
Yeah, but I want to fix that, you know, we'll work on this in the next couple of months, get the policy the way we're not gonna have to do that anymore.
Yeah, yeah. Brandy, would you like us to to vote on this for for the record, or are you okay with us just having a verbal agreement?
A verbal agreement, and I'll have Greg fill out an extra time sheet stating that twenty and a half hours for vacation paid out at the next payroll run for next Monday.
Okay. All right, so yeah, I just wanted to bring that up, because as we were talking about money, it came into my head and later on.
Yeah, no, I knew we hadn't resolved it.
Yeah.
But as I said, we want to make them aware that, well, if we can come to an agreement on it of how we will deal with it moving forward, probably, in my opinion, I don't want to be in this position again.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Anything else, Brandy?
Um, I don't believe so. I mean, the part-timers will be getting paid their their ten holidays, four hours per day. That ready to be, to be paid out next Monday also.
All right.
Okay. Shall we move on? Any questions for Brandy at all?
No, I'm good, and I'll get down and sign that paperwork.
Okay, all right.
I'm good.
Okay, so town clerk's report.
Hey, well, last week we became a Wi-Fi hotspot. Trevor, Trevor Thorpe, who is our representative on some
CV fiber.
Thank you. He flagged the fact that the state was willing to give us a free Wi-Fi hotspot. You know, a thing. And whoever Michael sent it around, and thank goodness Skip Marcus, he jumped on it, because the rest of us didn't know what to do with it. And so the guy with the, with the contract to provide this free equipment came in one day last week with Skip and they ran around and up and downstairs and and got it all installed. And now that's a nice benefit for people who live out here in the boondock.
Right.
And there is going to be, I mean, it's, the equipment was free, the insulation was free, I mean, it's paid for by the state in the first year, but after the first year, there will be a charge. I don't remember, it was like three hundred dollars for five years or five hundred dollars for three years or something. It wasn't, wasn't a huge amount.
No, it's not a lot.
It wasn't until the installation has already happened.
And it's, it's my understanding with this, and I do want to thank Skip, because he really took the ball on this and made it happen. This, this, it's kind of augmenting the Wi-Fi that's already at the town office and it, it will be beneficial to in some way to folks that live, you know, away from the town office. Somehow this allows people a little bit better access, you know, on some of the back roads that are within the periphery of the of the town office. And there's also there's also gonna be a second spot at the school, but the OSSU, the supervisory union is overseeing that, so there'll be actually two spots in town.
Laura used it over the weekend and she said it's much faster than just using our, our Wi-Fi from the building, which people have also been doing in the parking lot. But this new one is much better, so I would like to ask permission to buy a sign that I somehow to differentiate where people can park, because now that it's a Wi-Fi hotspot, they don't have to park right next to the building, so I'd like to up a sign that maybe says commuter parking and Wi-Fi parking here and town office parking over here, because I would check with the church first, because commuter parking will mostly be on their property, but we should have at least three or four spaces on our town side.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I do too.
Would would mind, because commuters don't park there on Sundays. Most of them don't.
The road, if you Diane, if you talk to the road crew, they have a place that could create those signs if you came up with the
Do they have, and maybe they have an extra pole or have to order a pole also, or?
No, they have, they have poles, I think, and I think they could get it in place. I would, I would hope, yeah.
Okay, I'll work on the language and I'll find out where to get it. Okay, so I realized recently that when people go to our website and they click, they want information, they click on clerk@woodburyvermont.org. I thought that was email for me, but come to find out, that goes to everybody, and it was kind of confusing sometimes, because other people on that email group are like the selectmen, are answering emails at the same time.
Oh.
With, you know, so anyways, I haven't changed it, so
Okay.
it's gonna be info@woodburyvermont, woodburyvt.org will be for people who have general questions and then anybody can answer it. And my other woodbury clerk@comcast.net email is on there for people who want to email me particularly.
Okay, so all, all of the different like land requests or property stuff, that'll go to you directly and not, not to me or anyone else on the select board, whoever?
Right.
Good.
It might. If they don't know where to send it, they might send it to info and then somebody will have forward it around, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so tomorrow night is a board of abatement meeting. I hope, we've only got one one applicant and and also to deal with that leftover taxes that the board agreed to pay years ago on the FEMA site. If you don't want to come, please don't bother to come, because if we get more than seven people, it's gonna be, I mean, the board has twelve, twelve members. Actually, it's thirteen, except Mary Genjy has two spots, she's both a JP and a Lister. So, yeah, that's enough a lot of people to have, someone have to come and make their case. Plus, it's gonna be miserably hot in the town hall.
Do you have a sense of how many people have indicated that they would be there?
Quite a few. I know I've heard from Paul. I heard from Patrick and Peter and Mary Genjy. I know Ron will be there and Brandy said she'll be there, so you know, there's ourselves there with me.
I have a pretty, pretty full-out day tomorrow and I would love to I have a pretty, pretty full-out day tomorrow, and I would love to not be there, but if you need me, give me a call.
Okay, great. By the way, is that your car up by the beaver dam?
No, I don't know whose car that is, with the flashing lights blinking. It was there this morning when I went into Hardwick, and it was there when I came back.
When I first saw it, I thought, maybe it's Michael doing the beaver thing, but then I came by again, and it's still there, and I said, you guys should go see if he's stuck in the dam or something.
Well, you know, I think, I think word is out that we, that will, you know, the town will take care of anybody's abandoned vehicle, so.
Yeah. Well, if you haven't noticed, there's a lot of people in town. There's a lot of people around.
Yeah.
Just to give you some context, the fire department's had 18 runs in the last eight days.
Oh, my goodness.
We've been out almost continuously. It's been terrible.
It's not rescue, that's actually, there's.
Medical and fire. We've had two big fires.
Wow.
Yeah, things are pretty dry now, so I would imagine.
There's a lot of people getting hurt, and it's just, there's a lot of people around. The lakes are full, or they were in the weekends.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully that car, I mean, at least they put the flashers on, so.
Still on, so.
It's gone? All right, good. It's still there?
The battery.
Still on? Yeah, well, we'll see how long the battery holds.
We get, if we really get that battery, if it lasts for two days.
No, that wasn't me.
Got any other questions for me? I think I'm all set.
Can't.
So I got your notice on the line adjustment. I'm gonna pass that off to Chance, because he's the person that has to sign that stuff, so I'll have him be in touch with you, Diana.
I did CC him on that email.
Okay, I'll, yeah, I'll just make sure he, because he has to do all this.
Yeah. I talked with Chris Green today about whether that has to be like really formalized, of whether he could put it into something, you know, more illegal looking. But he said, no, I couldn't do it. So I'll take another stab at making it into a, a signable document.
And I'll make sure Chance reaches out to you, work with, with you on that.
Okay.
Anything to share about the FEMA and the old store?
Oh, gosh, well, yeah, they, supposedly our payment is being processed. It would be great if that came in before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I have asked, now Stephanie Smith said the FEMA people are talking about maybe doing a virtual site visit, which seems, I mean, it's crazy for them to drive up here from Boston to look at a flat, half acre lot. I would really like, yeah, Russell's waiting for approval to, you know, buy the trees, even if he can't put them in quite yet.
Right.
So I'm just waiting to hear on that. And I wonder if the town garage has like grass seed.
They have.
They do, they do.
Yeah? Could you throw some down there? Because it's not doing very well.
I only heard part of that, Diana.
That the grass down there isn't doing very well. I wonder if you could throw some more seed down there.
Yeah, we'll get on it this week.
I, I, I think, you know, for seeding there, we should wait until we got, we're gonna get a little bit of a wet spell. I think that's part of the, part of the problem is it's been so dry that the seed isn't.
Super dry right now.
Yeah.
And, and as soon as he first put the seed down, it, there was a big downpour, so a lot of it sort of just got washed away from where it was originally settling, so. Hey.
Anything else?
Uh, maybe if it's all right with the select board, I'll have them hydroseed that.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
It would grow a lot better.
Yeah, it would, yeah.
That's good.
I don't know how, what Brian's intending as far as the possibility of doing more work on that stream, or if that's something you've, I mean, you've already got your budget for next year, so.
Right.
I don't know if we should proceed with, when the time comes, after FEMA gives their final approval, whether we should proceed with the rest of the landscaping, or wait until you decide whether you want to dig away at that stream bank some more.
Yeah, well, did you, have you had a chance to look into the stream restoration? You know, you mentioned that there might be some money to help pay for that.
Yeah, I'll see another FEMA grant.
Oh, it would be another FEMA grant? Oh.
No, no.
Oh, so, I thought you had mentioned that there was some money sitting somewhere that needed to be spent, and, and somebody would connect the town with it.
Huh, no, that wasn't.
That wasn't it, okay.
And any extra money that A and R might have had for stream restoration, it's probably dried up now, too.
Right.
Stuck broke.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I guess it's gonna be the way it is then for a while.
I've started on that curb to go in front of the culvert there.
Okay, great.
I've been, been extremely busy the last week and a half, and I haven't got it drawn up, but I will by the next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Then Shauna wanted to look at that. I mean, even if the work isn't being done on their property, if you're standing in there right of way with your equipment, they still need one of those 1111 permits.
Yeah.
She did, she did request to, to look at it, yeah.
Yeah, she talked to us that day about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got the contact person that does that, too, so now I'm familiar with this person.
Don't call him.
Will.
We'll go through Shauna.
Guy that's gotta come.
Go through Shauna, don't go through Montelier.
Yeah.
And we'll, you guys can okay it, or whatever you want to do, but I will have it for next meeting.
Okay. Anything else, Diana?
I don't think so.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Diana at all?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. So the next thing on the agenda is the Washington County Sheriff's Department contract. I haven't seen that. It's a pretty standard thing. I, I don't know if Paul or Brian, if you guys have had a chance to look at it, or?
I haven't seen it sent.
I don't think it's been. Go ahead, Diana.
I thought I sent it around.
No, it hasn't come to me anyway.
Again, if it's what we've been doing, I'm not opposed to resigning it anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's the same thing, yes.
I think, I think it usually requires the chair to sign it. I could get down to the town office and take a look at it, but it, it's always pretty much the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in your, your mail slot there.
Oh, okay, well.
Oh, it is pretty standard. Do we just have to fill in the number of hours and the number of dollars?
Okay.
Okay, and you know what we budget, Michael, so I'm good with just having you sign. If you need a motion, I can do that.
Yeah, me as well.
Okay, and, and I don't think we need to do the number of hours, because you can't figure, you know, just $5,000 or whatever.
Right.
They, they never quite do, do what we request, anyway.
I say just put the budget in there and see how much we get out of it.
Okay.
In fact, we sent a guy up to West Woodbury. I wonder if he went.
Well, you know, I can add, he did go up, but I can, I can add a little bit more about that. I got, last week, I got two calls from property owners up in West Woodbury complaining about the ATVs. And one of them actually had kind of recorded the number of ATVs in the day, which I had requested in an earlier conversation with this person. So, because the sheriff's department has always asked, you know, give us a time when the, the problem is, is happening, so that when we're there, we could actually be effective, rather than just going up there and listening to the birds sing, or whatever. So this property owner did give me some time and a suggested spot, and I got an email from him that I saw this afternoon, getting ready for the meeting, that last Saturday, the sheriff's department was up there
Oh.
for about five hours, and the traffic, ATV traffic on the class three road was significantly decreased. And so he's hoping that maybe their presence there helped. The problem there is that there's a class four, you know, it's legal for ATVs to be on class four roads, and there's a class four road coming from Hardwick that, that ends in, in the West Woodbury Road. And then it's just class three for a short, short section until the West Woodbury Road becomes class four again. So these people are coming on a trail and, and trying to access the, the West Woodbury Road further down where it is class four.
It's a short section, it's a long section, it's a couple of miles.
It's a couple of miles, you're right. And the people that live along the road do not like the, the level of ATV traffic that's there. You know, every summer, we've got lots of complaints.
Problem for years. It's, it's illegal for them to be riding on the class three road, and they haven't to figure out a trail to go around and to meet, so they can go down to Hardwick and go to the House of Pizza and go to M and M. You know, the, the snowmobilers have done that, but the ATVs have not, so.
Anyway, the Washington County Sheriff's Department was pretty responsive and, and, you know, after I spoke with them, so it's.
Did they say whether they up anybody?
And I haven't talked to the sheriff's department, and, but I did get two thank yous from two residents up there.
Did see it, great.
Yeah, so. Okay. So, yeah, so we could make a motion, or that I sign that contract after reviewing it, or we could, I could just do it.
I'll just make the motion. That way.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so I'll, I'll get down to the town office and sign it, and we'll send it on to them.
Okay.
And I, I would be curious, maybe at a future select board meeting, Brandy, if, if, if you could come up with the figures for how much the town has taken in from their, their roadwork. It's always kind of a curiosity to see how much we're spending and how much we're getting back through the fines.
If there was any way to, on the contract, whether to put, I know this is far-fetched, but splitting it, the gentleman that, the cop that stopped at the office never even knew, or had even been to West Woodbury.
Right.
But if, if there was somewhere on the contract that we could split, saying, you know, a quarter, a quarter here in South Woodbury, a quarter up in West Woodbury, just so that it's dispersed evenly and not sitting in the same spots that everybody knows they sit in.
Right, yeah, around Woodbury Lake, yeah.
Oh, that, that, it was illegal for, I mean, he didn't know the difference between a class three and a class four road, and he didn't know that it was illegal for ATVs to run on class three roads, but anyways, but maybe he learned.
Right. Sounds like a rookie deputy to me, but.
He was young.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, so let's, let's move on. You know, I thought maybe what we could do is just, I know Gary's been sitting there patiently. Maybe we could just discuss the town constable a little bit more while, while Gary is here. So he doesn't have to hang in till the bitter end unless he wants to, but I, I have to admit that I haven't made much progress on connecting with other towns to, to learn a little bit more about what other towns do. But I don't know, Gary, if you have had done, done any research at all, or?
Uh, no, nothing, nothing since the last time we met. I mean, I, I did do the online stuff prior to that, but I, there's too many different variables, even, I, I didn't know exactly what the town's looking for, so.
Yeah, and, you know, you had mentioned maybe the select board, and maybe in discussion with you, if we could come up with a list of, you know, responsibilities or for town constable. That's still, I, I think definitely doable, and I think, you know, we were thinking of looking to see what other towns have, have in place to get an idea of what, what that list might, might entail.
Hey, Michael, I've got one here for you.
Sure.
Janet, Jan Aronson at one time was the town's, town services officer, I believe.
Uh huh.
That was the heading on that, and it gets away from constable, but it gets to kind of what Gary wants to do. Help people in the town find services.
The state has done away with that position.
Really? I did look it up there, yeah.
Still might have one, if they have one, who was working that way for a long time, but they've done away with that official position.
Okay.
Of being, basically, the town service officer was the conduit for, if a person ends up in your town on the weekend, and they're in desperate need of services, and you can't get, you know, all the agencies are closed, the town service officer had certain amount of authority to contact the agencies on the weekend, or maybe make sure that people were taken care of. I don't know how often that ever happened, but.
So you don't believe we could just make this position available from something like that? And set what it can do?
I don't see why we couldn't. I mean, we could check that out with VLCT or whoever, but.
Yeah, because this seems like a better fit to me than constable, because I just, that gets into much law enforcement stuff.
I mean, I think we set the guidelines for whatever the person does, so.
Right. Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't create a position like this.
Something like that.
With that in line, yeah.
Well, you're talking about creating some possible ordinances, like noise ordinance and junk ordinance, when not having any enforcement, so you know, it might be nice to have somebody who's at least willing to tend to let, Paul thinks that's not a good idea for people to, for you to, anyone to approach.
It depends on the.
I think it's okay just not to have to get in a confrontation with them. I think it's fine to have someone go there and talk to them about it.
Right.
If they get ugly, leave.
Exactly, yeah. Well, you know, like, like I had mentioned, I, I didn't make any headway, but it's still, we'll, we'll keep it on the agenda, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I'll have a, I, I'd like to at least contact the callous constable. And, you know, we could, let's think about this town service officer a little bit more, and maybe that's what we'll call it. Yeah, I like that idea. So we'll, we'll keep at it and come up with something here.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
I'd be happy to do some research for you, too, if you want somebody to make phone calls and ask around.
That, I would appreciate that, Laura. That would be, yeah, that would be great. You know, part of what I was gonna try to do is, you know, I, I haven't made much, there wasn't much that VLCT had to offer, except for, you know, a whole series of state statutes, which I didn't look at. But maybe contacting some other towns that do have constables, you know, towns that are kind of equivalent in size and population as Woodbury, so we're, you know, we're not contacting the South Burlington Police Department or something like that, you know, something that where the town is comparable to Woodbury and, and if they do have a constable, you know, what, what that person does, and I, we could probably get them to send us the information that they have. That should be public information, I would, I would imagine. Maybe Diana's town clerk email tree would be a, an avenue for that. But if you would like, if you would like to do some work on that, that would be great.
I'll definitely, I can do that Thursday when I work for you guys.
Okay, all right. Anything else about the town constable or the town service officer?
Good with that.
Okay. Right, so, well, let's move on to the personnel policy review, and I'm gonna say the same thing I said to Gary. I haven't made much headway on that either.
Me either.
Yeah, I did get, we did get a response from Jill Muir. She did review the policy, and she had some suggestions and comments, which I have reviewed, and I did kind of incorporate some of those. I was hoping that I could share the personnel policy that I've been working on with this meeting. There is a way of doing that, but I tried just before the meeting, and it didn't look like it was gonna work. But, I mean, that's what we really need to do, is everybody have a copy of it in front of them.
Once we're sitting in the same room.
Yeah.
This is a little easier.
Yeah. So let's, that'll continue to be on the agenda. We'll just work on it. You know, hopefully with the next meeting, it sounds like we may be making some headway on having a, a physical meeting at the town hall.
Yes.
With, and maybe at some point, in fact, why don't we discuss that? Because we're kind of right there, and maybe Leaf would join us. You know, Leaf had mentioned that Hardwick did try doing this at their last select board meeting, and you know, having a meeting in a physical setting, and also have a way for people who didn't feel comfortable being there to connect by Zoom, and it sounds like it didn't work out so great. But, you know, Leaf had suggestions of either to have just a meeting in a physical. sounds like it didn't work out so great, um, but, uh, you know, Leaf had suggestions of either to have just a meeting in a physical setting, that could be recorded by HCTV, or to have just a straight Zoom meeting, but, um, you know, Paul was able to find out, um, what the fire station has for, um.
We've got enough upload speed, I think. We just gotta, I'd have to get together with Leaf to go, if he, to show him where we could run a cord through to get plugged into the network.
Yeah.
What he wants to do.
Yep, how, how far of a distance is it from your?
About, about ten, twelve feet between the buildings, and probably, if you had a.
Yeah.
If, it's probably a seventy-five foot cord, we could probably stick it through a window, and across the alley, and through another window, and if you had a hundred feet, that's for sure, but.
Right, well, I, I can get any cord we need, if, if that's the route we want to go, and if, if you guys decide you want to do, uh, a live meeting, but have, be able to have, uh, be able to have it broadcast live on YouTube, and on the channel, which some folks in Woodbury get channel ten eighty, but, um, but everybody else would see it through YouTube, and they'd be able to follow along and see it and listen, and, uh, we could uh, simply just put a phone number on the screen.
To call in.
To call in, very old, old fashioned, really, but, um, that, but that would work.
I like that better than do a half-live, half-Zoom. I don't think it's gonna work very well.
Yeah, the Zoom, um, you know, at the Hardwick meeting, uh, the, the board and the manager, they just had no attention for it, and, um, it's, as you can imagine, it's really hard to convey the whole meeting.
Right, you're just looking at one spot.
Exactly, and so the one person who did get in was saying they couldn't hear a thing, basically. They couldn't hear anything. So it's, it's pretty much useless to go that route, um, but I think, I think the live broadcast and the call-in idea could work um, as a hybrid situation.
But I think it's worth a try, and if it doesn't.
I, I agree.
I agree as well.
Yep, um, so it's, it's just a matter of, of me testing that out with Paul.
Okay.
I guess, um, I, I guess I would just need to meet up with you. It wouldn't take me very long, you know.
Yeah, just give me, uh, I'm, I'm around a couple different days this week, and I'm on vacation next week, so. So just get, when you're around, and I can get together with you.
And when is your next meeting? Do you guys take a, a meeting off in July? Hardwick does, I know.
No, we're, we're there every Tuesday evening.
Yeah, so, we are, we, we won't be taking a, our next meeting will be the thirteenth of July, and, and then the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so we'd be well away from the Fourth of July holiday.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, Paul, if you want to test it out, you said this week you might have time. You want to shoot me some times that are good?
Okay, I can do that.
Um, I'll send you an email right off, and.
Yeah, do me an email that way, I won't forget.
Yep, yeah, and, oh, the only other thing for me in that scenario is that I, I would need to get in there ahead of time, because it's a little bit more of a setup for me.
Correct, yeah.
To do the live broadcast, and especially with everybody set out, I need mics and a mixer, and it's a little bit more of a rigmarole, unfortunately, but, um, um, I might need like forty-five minutes before the meeting to get in there. Is that gonna be a problem?
No.
No, no, we'll get, we'll get you in there.
I've got access, and they've got access, too, so we can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's go for that on July thirteenth, let's, um.
Well, we'll see how the test goes.
Right, okay, right, yeah.
And, and then if, if it doesn't work there for some reason, we might have, you know, we, we could, we could look into Woodbury Elementary.
Yeah, we could check the school. I, I don't know what kind of issue the supervisor union would have, but I can, I can actually broach that subject with them, just so we have a sense of, of an option if it doesn't work, um, I'll check that out.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, okay, um, so I just, I just have one other, uh, brief update, follow-up, um, and then, you know, with the thoughts, I guess let's, but, I still have a couple thoughts on this, on the, on the meeting, um, so for a phone, what, what would we want to use for a phone, um, probably somebody's cellphone, iPhone?
Work off the Wi-Fi network there.
Okay, all right, so, and, and we would have, we would, we could give that number in the, you know, the gen, the agenda, um, I'll, I'll work up, uh, um, text that'll be different from what we've been doing with the Zoom meetings, um, to let people know, um, that we're trying something new, um.
Yeah.
That would go along with the agenda. Okay, so, so we'll use your, your cellphone number then.
Yeah, or we might even get to use, I think that we have a handset for the fire department's phone, we might.
Okay, all right, whatever, yeah.
I'll try that out when I'm there with Leaf.
Okay, so we'll, okay, great, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just have an update with, uh, Woodbury Stormwater Final Design, that grant project that, um, that's uh, actually underway. Now, we had our first, um, it was a Zoom meeting, um, actually, it was a go-to meeting, um, but I met with, um, the folks from the Regional Planning Commission, and, uh, um, the engineers from Du Bois and King, um, who are gonna be doing the final design, um, and, uh, we've kind of got a, a plan, um, for the progress of the full, full design work. It would hopefully be done by the end of the calendar year of this year. Um, they may, uh, be requesting that the road crew dig some test pits, um, which would, would, which would benefit, or the town could use any, anything that, um, that the town contributes to their work, um, is part of our in-kind donation, so, and I'll be tracking that, um, I'll be tracking my own time, uh, um, part of that will be the time that I put into this project, um, so, um, but it, so it, it has started, um, there'll be, um, one question I has, is that they were curious to see kind of what happened with the, in a flooding situation, and I remember the flood that we had a year ago in May. I know there was some photographs taken, and maybe even some video.
I've got quite a few.
If, if I could get my hands on some of the photographs, and even some of the video, um, I could send that to them. They're, they're trying to, I, I really like Du Bois and King. These guys are really practical, um, and, um, you know, part of the issue for these, um, uh, infiltration basins is how, how are they gonna handle a flooding situation, um?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there actually is a way where if there was a flooding situation, they would just kind of shut down and let the flood happen, um, so, um, there are different infiltration basins that they could use, um, so they kind of wanted, they were curious about that, so if, if, if there is a way that you could get some.
So just send me a reminder email, and I'll see.
Okay, I will.
Or have someone gather up for you and send to you.
Okay, I'll send you a reminder email, yeah.
Because it'll be gone thirty seconds from now if you don't.
Right, okay, yeah, I understand. I'm the same way, yeah. Good, and, and I have, they gave me a list of things to do, so I'll be doing a little bit of, um, sending them some, some information, but, um, so, and that, the process would be that, that first they would work up a sixty percent design, and then there would be like a, a town, um, hearing or review of the design. They would come and do a presentation. Um, we would try to get the different landowners involved, um, where these basins are actually gonna go, um, and then based on the input from the sixty percent design from the town and, and town residents, they would do a ninety percent design, which again would be reviewed um, for the final design, which of a hundred percent, and then we're, then we have those designs, uh, ready for the implementation process, so it's, it, which would be, you know, a few years out, um, but we would be, with those designs, we would be eligible for, uh, other grants to actually pay for the implementation, um, so that's kind of the process as it goes out, and I think, um, I have the time, I'll, I'll send out to, to everybody the timeframe. It's, it's a kind of a schedule that, that everybody agreed on, um, and those sixty percent designs, I think, are early in the fall, like September or October, maybe, um, or maybe even August, but I just, I, I haven't got that in my head, but I have it in paper, so. So that's pretty much it. Does anybody have anything else that, um?
I don't, no.
Okay.
I'm good.
Yeah. May, maybe while Chuck's right here, I, I know that he and I are having a hard time having our emails connect, so I just wanted to let Chuck know while he's right here in front of me on the screen, anyway, um, that I, there was a call, uh, that I received from, um, somebody up on East Long, and, uh, you know, it was kind of a garbled message. I didn't get, I only got his last name, it's Hunt, and he didn't get, he didn't give me a number. So I haven't been able to get back in touch with him, but he, he was talking about that culvert that, um, really washed up.
Oh, just before the meeting started, he was just here, and we talked.
Oh, good, so you guys connected, great, great.
Yeah, and I told him the first of next week, we'd be up there to do it.
Okay, great, all right.
So, one way or another, we gotta get up there.
Okay, yeah. Good, um, that's, I don't have anything else either. A motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great.